I'd like to call this meeting the Sholo City Council to order, show that all council members are present. I've asked Councilman Clark to lead us in the invocation followed by Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor Kavas. If you'd like to stand and join us, sorry.
Our Father in Heaven, we're thankful for this opportunity we have to gather as the city council for the city of Sholo to represent the interests of the citizens of Sholo. We are thankful for the opportunity we have to meet in this wonderful building and we're grateful for the forbearers who came before us who have laid the roots for this wonderful community. We're thankful for the current members of our community and for the the great spirit of camaraderie that we have in this community. We pray and ask that thou will please watch over and protect our first responders as well as our men and women who are serving in the armed forces. We ask that thou will please protect them and keep them safe, keep them out of harm's way and help them to return home safely to their families. We ask that as we enter in this holiday season, that the spirit of giving and kindness and love will enter into the hearts and the minds and to the feelings of those in our community and that as the opportunity to give presents itself that our community members will give according to their their ability and their desire. We ask that tonight as we deliberate and as we discuss the matters before us, that we will do so with an open heart and an open mind, that we will be compassionate to those who are bringing matters before us and that we will have the best interest of our community in mind and in our hearts. We ask that if that will help us to deliberate in a civil and pleasing manner unto the these things we humbly pray for in the name of thy son Jesus Christ, amen.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilman Clark, Vice Mayor Kavas. I got it right this time. Okay, next item on the agenda is called the public. Any citizen desire to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city council may do so at this time. We don't have anything, do we, Rachel? Seeing nobody move, I'll go on to next item on the agenda is special events presentation regarding Sholo Senior Center and Meals on Wheels. Ms. Alley.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and staff. Really excited to be here to talk about all the amazing things that have been happening at the Senior Center. So this, just so you know, this presentation is really going to be focused on the contract that we have with the city and that is to manage the Senior Center. However, because we manage the Senior Center that we're blessed to do, we're also able to serve Meals on Wheels out of there. So you're going to see a little bit of information regarding that as well. No. Maybe if I just click it and then it goes from there. There we go. All right, so. I'll let you take control of that.
Let me.
Perfect. Thank you, thank you. So these are board members. We do have a vacant position open. We did have Rachel Sutton on. She had to leave and we're looking to fill that spot. Some of our members have backgrounds that are very valuable and representing our senior population. For example, we have on here Jim Gerard who represents our veterans. So if you think of anybody on here, we have Public Health on here. We have Tony Alba with Pine Top Lakeside. We obviously have our city liaison and our city position with the mayor. So if you think of anybody out there that might, you know, be a great part of the team, we'd love that input that we can add somebody to this. We about two years ago did a strategic plan and with that we came up with a mission statement that we have been really engaged in moving forward and that's devoted to providing quality services, senior meals, supportive services and experiences. And that's just what we're doing, which you will see as we move forward. So right now we have our Meals on Wheels programs, like I said earlier, and then we have our Sholo Senior Center programs. Just with Meals on Wheels, we did about 15,000 meals just for home-delivered meals. We also last year got the contract to provide Head Start feeding. And what's exciting about that is a lot of the food that we provide Head Start is the same food we're providing our seniors. So they're getting like chicken cordon bleu or they're getting items or meals that they don't normally get at home. It's not just chicken figures, you know, and cheetos and apples. It really is testing their palate and giving them this opportunity to try new flavors and hopefully helping their parents out because if anybody's ever had a picky kid, I've had several, you know how difficult it could be. So it's neat to do that. We share nutrition information with them as well. One of our board members, Bryony, is here today and she's with Public Health and provides that nutrition information for us that we're able to send out to our Meals on Wheels clients. Our center gets that, people who comes in the center, and then family members. Congregate, we currently provide Congregate as a Sholo Senior Center program. It's not something that's funded by NACOG, but because of our mayor's involvement with NACOG, because of the work that Jay Brimhall did on his end, the work that I've done on my end, it's taken a team effort and we were just awarded a pilot project starting December 1st for the Congregate Feeding Program through NACOG. We are extremely excited about this program because what that does is it offers us the opportunity to feed more individuals that cannot afford it. And all they have to do is provide a donation or not and we will feed them. So we're getting, ramping up to get them to fill out the applications right now and get them in. It's for 21 seniors at this time and thanks to Mayor Leach, a lot of the work he did, we really appreciate that. They're moving it forward. So after this pilot program, we will be able to apply for a year of Congregate Feeding and then, and then the normal contract a year later for the four years. So they've been very proactive in making sure that we can meet this need in the community by allowing us to apply so early. So we definitely appreciate that partnership. So there's a couple of things that we have brought to the Senior Center. We have Mapping for Mindfulness. That is a program where we help individual seniors sit down and talk about, you know, some of them are lonely, some of them feel that, you know, their, their children are talking down to them. We work through those issues with them to make sure we help find a common ground of security and happiness. And so Roslyn, who has a background in mental health, written many books, is one of our CSEP individuals who provides that class and it's amazing, had phenomenal feedback. We also started delivering food boxes to our homebound seniors. So we partnered with United Way and we provide the food boxes and there's 25 right now, but we can get up to 32 food boxes and we're working on getting more people. This is the second month we've done it and so there was a lot of training and the staff has been amazing with implementing that. The other thing that we do is we partner with Fishers of Men to feed our homeless veterans. I know that you're probably familiar that we do have a lot of veterans that want to live in the woods. They want to be in a tent. So we meet them where they are and because of Fishers of Men, they come in, they get the frozen food. I asked Marty Jarvie, I said, "How do they cook these?" And she goes, "They just stick it in a pan over a fire and, and it's working for them." It was a program that came about in COVID. It stopped getting fundy. We absorbed that to continue it with her. So, and then Congregate Breakfast and Lunch. We'll talk more about that. We started breakfast in, I think it was February, well, no, April. And it's been bringing a lot of people into our Senior Center. So what you see here is the blue lines are all the breakfast, everybody who comes in for breakfast the month of April. And then you see our lunch and for our members, we do have a membership program at the Senior Center now. So we have members that pay $20 a year to be a part of the Senior Center. They're able to use our notaries, they're able to use, you know, the, any type of printing that they need or they get information about classes and we don't charge them to do any of the classes there. We don't really charge for classes anyways, but it's nice. They get a little bit of extra perks with the, the printing and using our computers and all that. So the member lunches, we, we count every member that comes in and eats every day and then we count the guests. This is something that we haven't had in a long time. We haven't had people coming into the center in a long time. A lot because of COVID and a lot because the resources just weren't there. We've done very, we've done a lot of groundwork in creating a atmosphere where seniors enjoy it. A big win was we got the Senior Patrol back. The Senior Patrol used to come in all the time and they hadn't been there in years. They come in there two to three times a week and we are very proud of that and they really like what they see. So we have that. The other thing is the breakfast, we opened up Gertie's Kitchen. So Gertrude Bartlett, that goes by Trudy, was when I went in and contracted to look over Meals on Wheels and, and do the strategic plan and assess it, one of the things I found was newspaper clippings of this woman and all the hard work she did. She started doing sack lunches out of her house and then partnered with Meals on Wheels to bring it up to the nonprofit that it was. I know that there was other players in there and I thank them very much for that, but with Trudy, which we call Gertrude's Kitchen, she really was in a lot of championing this throughout our community. So we named it Gertie's Kitchen. People can come in. We keep breakfast as affordable as we can. We're not here to make money, but whatever we make off of this helps with the Meals on Wheels program and helps with our Senior Center programs. So it's very important. If you haven't been in there, it's really good food. I, I eat it. Like I said, the Senior Patrol loves it. We have families that come in there. We have Future Tire, the whole staff of Future Tire comes in every Friday. Loves it. It's affordable. It's quiet right now. We get about, you know, 30 to 40 people in there for breakfast. Quiet, so it's a great time to meet people, talk, you know, and, and support our center and our Meals on Wheels program. And it includes coffee and tea is included, so you don't get charged extra for that. So the other thing I want to show you here is clubs and groups. These are the current clubs and groups and how often they meet and I'm probably missing a few, but these were at the top of our head. These are how many people are coming in to our Senior Center. We have, we've been taking sign-in. We have about, I think it was 3,000 people who have signed in through the Senior Center. We don't have people sign in for lunch. We don't have people sign in for breakfast and we don't get those at night and some people just won't sign in. So it's not a true representative of what we have, but it's still good numbers showing that we're getting use of the centers, which was important. That's what we want to see. It's a beautiful center. We want people to utilize it. The other thing is, is we've created events and we've provided events in the community. We partnered with Pat, with Pat's Place Pizza. I don't know if you've ever heard of that guy, just kidding. And we did his Patty, St. Patty's Lunch and it was fantastic. So much so that he wants to come back and do it again, so this can be an annual thing with him. It was fantastic. We got little stickers made of his logo and, and people are donating and we were giving out stickers and it was just a fun time. Suzie Underwood, if you've ever met Suzie, she's been at the Senior Center for years. She is amazing volunteer and she puts on every year a senior health and fitness. And those were some of the speakers there and the partners that came in and talked about that. I think they had about 30 participants, which is, which is awesome, especially during the week. We did a 4th of July celebration. That was huge. People love the root beer floats. We just barbecued with them. Jim Gerard let us use the Catholic, what is it? The, I'm going to get it wrong. It's on the tip of my tongue. Anyway, Jim Gerard's part of the Catholic Church and they have the men with the swords and the hat, you know what I'm talking about?
Columbus?
Yes, thank you, thank you. Yes. They have a grill and they let us use it. And so when we have big events during the summer, we got to use their grill a lot and that was awesome. We have, we had a caregiving class that we partnered with NACOG in. We had 14 people come to six weeks of class and loved it and we're looking at partnering with NACOG again on that. Veterans Day, we're looking at feeding our vets for free that day. Show them us your event so we can, you know, contribute to a big thank you for what we've been able to do. So the other thing is, is we're doing Free Thanksgiving again this year and I want to thank the council members who helped us to do that. We really appreciate that partnership. We are working with the schools who's going to help us cook the turkeys and make the pumpkin pies. We have staff that is going to do all the fixings and everything there and we have St. Anthony's kids who are going to come and feed it. So we're ready to go. We have three seedings. Please sign up, come in, enjoy a Thanksgiving lunch. You can get it again on Thursday, so we're doing it Tuesday. And then we're also partnering with NACOG for joy for older adults. So this is kind of like, you know, you see the Chris, kids, the kids give cops shop with a cop or the Christmas trees. This is a Christmas tree for our homebound seniors. We're very fortunate. We have the Women's Club who do a lot of stuff, but this is specifically to seniors who are able to say, "Hey, I need this or I need that." You can come in, grab a ticket and buy a senior a gift. So then there's other things that we've done. We've done a lot of event participation. We've been asked to be out there promoting the Senior Center and Meals on Wheels and we have gone out there with a booth and those are a couple of the things that we've done. A lot of these, we're very fortunate. A lot of invited us out and then they've provided donations at that day that we've got to put towards our Meals Program. And then event catering, we've done, again, Mayor Leach, I can't thank you enough for helping Fishers of Men with this. I know that you and Jim worked on making sure they could have funding. Marty Jarvie came to us and said, "We have no money to feed any of the vets at Stand Down." I talked to Junior at one of the meetings, Mayor Leach, at one of the meetings and we, he came up with some help financially and we were able to help cater that event for them and it meant the world to Marty. So we have the Mahjong Tournament. We have about 50 women that come in during the summer and just love it. And we're just creating those partnerships with our community and our clubs. City of Sholo, again, goes above and beyond. We did their burrito bar for them. That was awesome. So there's been a lot of great things that we're, we're doing with the place. So we do keep on top of our staff. We do trainings for our volunteers. We do education for our staff, which is really, we want to invest in them. So we have a lot of that going on. In November, we actually have NACOG coming in to talk about the Meals on Wheels program to our volunteers. And then we can't say this enough, we love the city of Sholo and we love what Rick Austin and his team have done for our center. That's a gem. I know that you guys are all aware that you have a fantastic team here, but they, Rick and his team have gone above and beyond. It's an incredible relationship that we've built over the past, I want to say, six months. It's been fantastic. There's all the stuff that they've done in there and the city has sponsored or helped or supported. We really appreciate the work and the love you give to that center. The other thing is, is I do want to thank Mayor Leach for helping pave the relationship. I want to thank Jay Brimhall for helping us coming in and filling some gaps. I mean, he's been fantastic. Ed, I want to thank you for always, you know, your tax credit and everything and supporting. You say you're going to do it and you do it every time. So I really appreciate it. Morgan, your guidance. I mean, it really, where the center was to where the center is now today, it's incredible. People go in there and the vibe is amazing. They're enjoying themselves. One situation, we had a woman who came in there crying. She was very lonely. And Karen's like, "Oh, come to her." And we, if you haven't met Karen, you will. She's amazing. Karen says, "Come to our Christmas party." And they did a little potluck and the woman came to the Christmas party. And then Karen said, "Oh, try this club, introduce this club." The woman got involved in all the clubs. The woman got friends there. It was just, she was no longer lonely. She had just recently lost her husband. So it is a place that's not only providing the resources, but it's providing the connection and that's really important to individuals in our community to have that. It keeps them, you know, up and, and happy. So we've also had situations where we work very well with the apartment complex behind us. We had an individual who fell and we, our staff went and helped them. Not only did they help him, but they came back on a Saturday to clean his house, make sure he was set up. They connected him with all the services and the resource. The staff that we have there, the love and the care that they give each individual that walks through that door is amazing. And I, I can't say enough about how amazing they are. And then, divided, but our Meals on Wheels, Arizona White Mountain Board. Our board is fantastic. The innovation, the support, the times when they have to come in and, and, and help us and the times when they just stand back and say, "Go for it", has just been amazing and it, it's really working and it, and it definitely takes the village, even with children and even with adults in creating that. And then I want to share a vision statement with you all. So creating a community culture that ensures every white mountain area senior is fed, valued and respected. This was something that is very important to us. What we're trying to do at the Senior Center, we're trying to create an environment where seniors can live again. They're not just stuck, you know, at their house or, or ignored or, or not appreciated or talked to. It's a place where seniors can thrive. When I'm talking about seniors, I don't, 55 plus is not seniors. I'm married to a man who's 55. I do love the art benefits, I'm not going to lie, but it's really not, you know, it, there's a new, we need to push that or a lot of it. Seniors still want things to do. They're very active. They're very fun and they want to have those social connections. And so we really want to support that and respect them on that and build this around them and provide opportunities for them to connect with the community and the community to connect with them is, is what this is basically saying. And that's it.
That's it?
That's it. I did good.
Wow.
Yeah, I didn't even read my notes. I couldn't even get to them.
And you took two breaths.
I, well, you know me.
Alley, thank you. You know, I, I, I get to see you at least a minimum at the meetings once a month, but your passion is amazing and you're right, when, when you're passionate about something you do, it makes it easy, but it's with, with the relationship with NACOG and the city of Sholo and getting more people involved, what's really nice is actually what you said about some of the home, the Meals on Wheels where some of the seniors, the only time they get to see a human is when that's delivered. But that's starting to change because now they're going, "I can go down the Senior Center and not have to, it, it's more of what's down there for me. It's not that I got to go eat there. It's not that I can go hang out. I can go read a book. They don't have to do anything." So I'm, it's awesome to see that Senior Center change to that, to more of a community center because the seniors do go down there, but they, they interact with everybody down there. I see more people going down there and sitting there watching TV and then their friends come in and they just go sit and watch TV. So it's really cool what you've done. Your passion is amazing, but you're right, the relationship between everybody involved. And you know, sometimes it's just a phone call, "Hey, we need this. We need that." If you know somebody, if you need something at the Senior Center and you say something to me, I go, "Wait, I just seen a guy." So it is that kind of communication that makes it better, but like I said, your passion is amazing. The boards, I mean, we work really good together with the board. Thank you for coming tonight. I appreciate it, one of you. But, but anyway, it's amazing down there. It really is. I, I really don't look at it as a senior center, like we used to, so.
Well, and Anna, Anna would have been here. She, and if you can keep her in your hearts, her, her father passed away recently, so it, it should, it's hard. I mean, especially coming from a daddy's girl. So just keep her in your hearts for that, or else she would have been.
Vice Mayor?
Very much, you know, to what Mayor Leach has said. But I want to congratulate you and, and the board and the staff for your accomplishments. And you're right that it's come a long ways. It is not the Senior Center of the past and it's really exciting to see your presentation and see all the things that you all are doing. And we appreciate your efforts. You know, we all have seniors in our families and watching out for our seniors is, that's, that's our, our charge in life is, you know, they took care of us growing up and it's our turn to pay back or pay it forward. So thanks for all you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Alley. Appreciate it very much. Okay, next item on the agenda is Consent Calendar. We'll consider acceptance of Frontier Park remodel improvement. Consideration of acceptance of grant funds for computer replacement for Sholo TV. Consideration of Resolution Number R 2022-21 Grant Utility Easement to Unisource. Consideration of acceptance of Frontier Park grass and irrigation improvements. Consideration of acceptance of grant funds from Arizona State Parks. Consideration of approval of commercial operating agreement with Air Methods Corporation. Consideration of the minutes of the joint study session October 18th. Regular meeting October 18th and this special meeting October 19th, all of 2022. Anybody want to pull something? If not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar. As read, I got a motion. Need a second? Got a second? All those in favor? Motion passed unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is consideration of ordinance number 2022-03, authorizing the exchange of parcels of real property of subsequently equal value pursuant to ARS 9-407 and authorized agreement for exchange of real property with SR Holdings LLC. Mr. Brown.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. The city owns two parcels of property located in the Sholo Bluff area known as Navajo County Assessor's Parcels, numbers 21062074, which is at 620 South Ridge Rock Drive and 21062021 at 661 South Creekside Drive. The city acquired these parcels during a public auction when the previous owners did not pay their special assessment. No one bid on the parcels at the auction, so the city was able to obtain the parcels for the amount of the assessment. The city has identified two parcels in Sholo Bluff known as Navajo County Assessor's Parcel 21065094, which is at 1020 South Ridgeway Place and 21065045 at 801 South Ridge Creek Lane. And they're shown on your map and your packets. I don't know if we can pull that out, Rachel. Anyways, the city approached the owner of these parcels, which is SRH Holdings LLC, about doing an exchange. SRH Holdings is the major property owner in Sholo Bluff, the developer base of Sholo Bluff. Parcel 21065045, which I think is shown there on the map, is located, you can see next to our well number 13. And parcel 21065094 is the one farther to the south there. There contains a well that they had done for a test well in the area that we can use for our future utility use. Would be advantageous for the city to own these parcels in case future repairs are needed for well 13 and for the usage of the well. City has tested the well and it produces 333 gallons per minute. Sholo Bluff Homeowners Association has agreed to waive any fees for these parcels in the future and the city has agreed to pay off the remaining assessment on the parcels owned by SRH Holdings in exchange for the well. ARS 9-407 requires that any exchange of property be done by ordinance after the exchange has been published in the local paper. The exchange of property must be for substantially equal value. Notice of intent has been published in the local newspaper as required by ARS 9-407C and 39204. Ordinance number 22202203 authorizes the mayor to execute the necessary documents to trade. The city-owned property for privately-owned property is shown on the attached maps. Parcels are of substantially equal value as the lots are similar and in the same subdivision. ARS 9407 authorize an exchange of parcels for substantially equal value. Staff recommends that the council adopt ordinance number 202203 and approve the attached agreement for the exchange of real property. I'm here if you have any questions. Can everybody see it on the map? Okay, does everybody understand what we're doing?
Questions or comments? Seeing none, by unanimous consent, I'll have the city clerk read ordinance number 2022-03 by title only since all council members have.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. City of Sholo ordinance number 2022-03, an ordinance of the mayor and the council of the city of Sholo, Arizona, authorizing the exchange of parcels of real property of substantially equal value pursuant to Arizona revised statute 9-407.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments or motions? Councilman Judd?
I move to adopt ordinance number 2022-3 and further move to approve the agreement for, for exchange of real property with SRH Holding LLC.
Got a motion. I got a second, Council on Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign, motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Brown. Appreciate that. Next item on the agenda is consideration of approval of scope revision to water storage tank 8B construction, city of Sholo project number W 2222. Mr. Hensaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's March 15th, 2022, meeting the city council word of construction contract for water storage tank 8B construction. Like you said, city of Sholo project number W 2222 to Paso Robles Tank Inc. in the amount not to exceed $1,549,350. Scope of work include installing a new 1 million gallon water storage tank and install the required piping to connect to the city system. Scope work also include coating the inside of the new tank and painting the outside of the new tank as well. The new tank, called 8B, is located next to the existing 1 million gallon tank on the site called 8A. The new water storage tank is nearing completion and will be painted soon, actually being painted this week. Staff has inspected the exterior paint on the existing tank 8A next to it. There are locations where the paint is peeling and fading. Staff reached out to the contractor and requested a cost estimate to paint the existing tank 8A after they complete painting the, the new tank 8B. This will save additional procurement costs and contractor mobilization costs in the future. Additional cost to paint the existing tank 8A is $37,334.09. Cover the cost of additional scope. Staff has proposed utilizing funds out of the water tank maintenance line item in the existing budget. Staff recommends approving the scope provision to the water storage tank 8B construction due to Sholo project W 2222 to Paso Robles Tank Incorporated. to Cholo Project W two-two two-two to Paso Berroles Tank Incorporated in that amount not to exceed the additional thirty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and nine cents. Uh, a denim scope of work is attached and the additional scope of work estimate is attached as well. Are I available for any question?
Lot of sand traps out there. Any questions or comments or motions? Councilman Alsop?
I move to award the scope of revision to water storage tank eight B construction, City of Cholo Project W two-two two-two to Paso Berroles Tank in, in the amount not to exceed thirty-seven thousand, three hundred thirty-four dollars and nine cents.
Got a motion? Second by Vice Mayor. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign, motion passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is consideration of resolution number R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two authorizing submitting application for Arizona State Parks Historical Preservation Histor, Hist, Historic Funds Rehabilitation of Reedhead House and Committed of Local Funds. Mr. Johnson?
Let you read the whole thing if you want, Mayor.
Heritage Funds.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The Reedhead House was purchased by the city in October twenty twenty-one to preserve this historic home for enjoyment by the community. Construction on the home began in nineteen-ten and is in relatively good shape for its age, but many repairs are needed to restore the home to its original vintage charm. Upon purchase of the property, a structural engineer was hired to assess the home's foundation, which was found to be suffering from a major failure that required immediate stabilization with lift jacks and a new foundation. Although no further renovation has occurred, other repairs are necessary to restore the home to its original grace. These repairs include restoration of the interior, installation of rain gutters to protect the foundation, patch and paint interior and exterior walls, upgrade electric and gas lines under the floors and restore the kitchen to its original timeless style. The remaining home repairs were estimated to be one hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars, which includes eight thousand dollars for the architectural evaluation. In twenty twenty-two, the legislature restored and to statute the heritage fund now administered by Arizona State Parks. A maximum of, of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants funds for project is available with a minimum forty percent applicant match of the total project cost. The city certified grant pre-application for heritage funds was approved by Arizona State Parks on September twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, now allowing the city to formally apply for historic preservation funds under the standards for rehabilitation outlined in the Secretary of Interior Standards for the Treatment of Historic Properties. It is necessary to adopt a resolution authorizing the City of Cholo to submit a historic preservation application in the amount of eighty-two thousand, eight hundred dollars and commit funds of fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars as leverage beyond the grant award for completion of the project. I'm available for any question.
Thank you, sir. Questions? Comments? Motions? Vice Mayor?
I move to adopt resolution number R twenty twenty-two dash twenty-two authorizing submitting an application for FY twenty twenty-three Arizona State Parks Historic Preservation Heritage Funds to finance the rehabilitation and historic preservation of the Reedhead House in compliance with the Secretary of Interior Standards and committing local funds of fifty-five thousand, two hundred dollars as leverage and authorize the associated budget transfer.
Got a motion? Got a second by Councilman Adams. All those in favor? All those opposed, same sign, motion passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next item on the agenda is summary of current events. Anybody that way? Councilman Alsop?
Thank you. Um, just wanted to let everybody know, uh, that the trunk or treat that, uh, just happened a couple of days ago here in Cholo was a great, great event. They had over four thousand people there at that event. It was just enormous. So, uh, they're looking at, hopefully try to revamp some of the stuff to get, uh, make it, the flow a little bit easier. But, uh, it was a great turnout and to have that many people when Pine Top Lake said it was going on about the same time, that was, uh, amazing. So, and I just want to let everybody know that they have, uh, the right to cast their vote next Tuesday and, uh, to make sure you show up, uh, cast your own vote or do your mail-ins or whatever you need to do. So that's it.
Councilman Judd?
Thank you. Uh, yeah, we went to the trunk or treat event with my kids and we, uh, we went around the, the trail, uh, the, the city park and that was a great event. I'd like to just thank everyone that was involved with that. The police officers were there, uh, the kids had a great time. So I'm grateful for you guys and you've done that together. And also one other thing, we have, uh, Cholo football is in the, the state playoffs and that's this Friday at, uh, seven PM. So come out to support our team.
Who are we playing?
Blue Ridge.
We have to talk to the council about that tomorrow. I'm going to meet with them right there.
Yeah.
I have. Okay, um, so yeah, so obviously yesterday was Halloween and so now today, November first, obviously kicks off the Christmas season, right?
No.
So it, uh, so, um, yeah, we, we skipped Thanksgiving. So, um, a- as, as always, this has been going on for thirty-eight years now. The, uh, annual feast of carols for the Cholo Unified School District, they're going to put that on at the Whipple Ranch Elementary School. They've been doing this for, like I said, for thirty-eight years. Uh, this year, the, um, uh, the shows are going to be on November thirtieth, December first, second and third. And so tickets go on sale November fifteenth at the district auditorium. So, um, I know that's a, a, a great, uh, community event that has been going on for a very long time and invite everybody to get their tickets for that. And then also, uh, speaking of, of holiday things, on December eighth, the, uh, the presentation of the Forgotten Carols is going to be coming to the Cholo High School Auditorium and, uh, tickets are on sale currently right now, which that's a, uh, a phenomenal professional production. The last time they were here, I was able to attend and it's really a, a moving depiction of the holiday season. And, uh, it's kind of a great time to, to kick off the, uh, the holiday season. So I'd invite everybody in the community to go out and support our performing arts here in Cholo. We really have a phenomenal group of students and also, uh, this performance that's coming to town, so.
Thank you. You going to talk about the community fast a little bit? City manager, when it comes to you?
Sure.
Okay, well, I didn't want to step on your parade. I really don't have anything other than congratulations, Chevy. Proud of you. I remember that kid when, when he was working at McLaren's Auto and he's gone up from there for over twenty, how many years you been?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six years and he's, he was just, uh, voted on by the board, the fire board to become our new fire chief. So congratulations, Chevy. Pretty awesome. City manager?
Thank you. It's just a few things to report here. A celebration of life and legacy of service will be held Tuesday, November eighth at seven PM at the Public Safety Headquarters in honor of fallen officer Cholo, Cholo Police Officer Darren Reed. The downtown lights will also be turned blue from November sixth through at least November twelfth in remembrance of Officer Reed. The public's invited to attend that ceremony. And on Friday, November eleventh, Veterans Day, the VFW will hold a ceremony at eleven AM at the Veterans, um, Memorial at City Hall across the street, one eighty North Ninth Street. And that event is open to the public. The Community Fast is November thirteenth through the nineteenth and, um, that's a Cholo Community Fast, which our city council supports. And it's for, and it's, all the churches and, and the public are invited to participate in that and donate, um, fast for one or two meals and then donate that or more to the, the, um, project and they'll, they help those in need during the Christmas season. Then the Family Aquatic Center will be closed for three weeks from November twenty-fourth to December eighteenth for annual maintenance. And in public works projects, uh, citywide roadway improvements are nearing completion with lacking at, um, twenty-eighth Street. And West McNeil's also under construction. They, they're finishing the curb work on that and the, the contractor hopes to do twenty-eighth Street and West, West McNeil at the same time. Hopefully weather permits us to get it done this month. The McNeil Acres Sewer Installation Project is complete with the contractor finishing up the testing, asphalt patching and cleanup. And at Frontier Park, the playground and splash pad are nearing completion. We hope to have a ribbon cutting on the playground, um, later this month. We'll notify the council of that. And we're finishing conduit on the East Huning Sidewalk, wide sidewalk project. That's, um, toward White Mountain Road from here. And they will start grading and curb next week. And there's a lot of projects going on, so we just appreciate everyone's, um, patience as we complete some of these projects. Thank you.
Thank you, city manager. Appreciate it. Anybody need seconds? All good? Next item on the agenda, scheduled meetings. We have one tomorrow night up in Pine Top Chamber, Pine Top Town Hall, six o'clock. It's more of a social, but we do have some, a presentation by, by the, the two chief provost, Chief Barnes and Chief Deputy Swante on the communications efforts. Good. The main thing of that was, I'm sure you all know, is just kind of a meet and greet. Got a couple of new people, they got a few new people. So that was kind of the intention with Mayor, so.
Mayor?
Yes.
Also, I would, uh, we, we'd like to schedule a study session with the council on November fifteenth at six-thirty before the council meeting. We have an item we'd like to have some input on before we place it on an agenda.
Good for everybody? Okay, next item on the agenda is, uh, look for a motion going to executive session. We'll discuss or consider of employment assignment or appointment promotion.
Go move.
I have a motion, I need a second. All those in favor? This time we'll go on executive session. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chevy. Good seeing you.